Ladies and gentlemen, the editor of the Illyria Weekly Gazette, Mr. Will Rogers Jr.
Thank you. You know, lots of people say that public opinion should be guided by our best politicians and statesmen. The only thing is, that all too often, our politicians and statesmen are best guided by public opinion.
Rogers of the Gazette, offering you again tonight, transcribed, another heartwarming story of a country newspaper and its friendly editor, and starring, Will Rogers Jr. It's like any other small town, but the folks who live in Illyria wouldn't live anywhere else. Now that it's summer, the trees have leafed out in the square around the town hall, and the grass is growing up thick and green. The Weekly Gazette faces one side of the square, where Will gets out the weekly paper, he and Maggie Button, his assistant. Of course, Will's likely to be anywhere but in his office. Fishing? Out visiting? Or like this afternoon, maybe, sitting in on a meeting of the Town Council.
All right, gentlemen, members of the council, mark your ballots, fold them as usual, place them in the box.
Here's mine, Mayor.
Whoa, that, Ava, didn't take you long to make up your mind, eh?
I had it made up.
Well, they're gonna vote it down, they're certain to.
Well, now, Ava, I figure the only thing certain in this world is that nothing is certain.
That old Avro Dean, he's responsible for it. As long as he's in office, there's no chance of getting it.
You, you visitors, gonna have to be quiet, or else leave the council room. All right, boys, pass those ballots on up now.
The town needs that youth center, Will. I know those kids on the edge of town. I've worked with them for three years now on the welfare board. They'd be a lot different if they had a place like that to go to, a place that belonged to them.
Ava, you're quoting my own editorial, Zapp.
In the matter of the motion to purchase a parcel of land for the construction of the youth center, the council votes has followed. Three votes, yea; four votes, nay. Motion is defeated.
And a good thing, too, another fool's scheme to spend the taxpayers' money.
Oh, really, grandfather? Is the taxpayers' money more important than the taxpayers' children?
Miss Lawson, now, this is a council meeting, not an open hearing. You were given a chance to present your suggestion, and the council has not acted on it, and the matter is closed.
Of course it is, Mayor, because grandfather, Mr. Dean says so. Mr. Dean owns the town and the council. Look at next week's election, why nobody's even got the nerve to run against him!
Here, here, you're out of order, Miss Lawson!
We can't be fooling all the people, Will.
He doesn't have to, just enough of him to get elected.
If somebody would only run against him, I'll bet they could beat him.
Well, it's worth a try. Why don't you do it?
Me?
Sure, people in the town know you, they know what you stood for on the welfare board, and what you know what you believed in.
That's no qualification for holding down.
Ava, politics is the only profession in this country where you don't need any qualifications to get a job.
Do you really think there's a chance?
You'll never hatch chickens if you don't set some eggs. What do you got to lose?
I'll do it. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce my candidacy for the office of Town Councilman.
Miss Lawson, the final date for filing was a month ago, the elections next week.
But I'm running as a write-in candidate.
Well, this is hardly the place to...
Furthermore, I'd like to announce that I'm being supported by the Illyria Weekly Gazette and its editor.
Now, wait a minute, Ava.
Will, you talked me into this?
Yeah, but Maggie and I have always made sure the paper stayed nonpartisan in these local elections.
You and Maggie want that youth center just as bad as I do. All right, you'll never hatch chickens if you don't set some eggs. Now, what have you got to lose?
Just half of my circulation and advertising and... Oh, confound it, yes, I'll support you. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, what Mrs. Lawson has said is correct. The Gazette is backing her all out.
Um, well, it came out, Mrs., uh, let's go back to line twenty-three. Uh, line twenty-three, you and Maggie want that youth center, the adlets are in.
You and Maggie want that youth center just as bad as I do. All right, you'll never hatch chickens if you don't set some eggs. Now, what have you got to lose?
Just half of my circulation and advertising and... Oh, confound it, yes, I'll support you. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, what Miss Lawson said is correct. The Gazette is backing her all out.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please, uh, Mr. Rogers, this is a council meeting, not a newsstand. Gentlemen, please, now, please, now, just a minute now, the council is adjourned.
Will, I trust you'll come to your senses when you think this over. Meantime, I'll ask you to cancel my advertising, political and business.
All right, Mr. Dean.
As for you, young lady, I... Good day, both of you.
Maybe you have got something to lose, Will.
Ava, what the dickens is all this? Somebody out in the hall was saying you're gonna run for the council.
I am, Jim.
But you've got no business in politics.
Look who's talking, the city attorney.
Well, that's different. I met a woman, reason with her, Will, talk her out of it.
Be glad to, Jim, but there's only one trouble, though. I talked her into it.
That's right, Will's backing me, we're in this together.
Oh, I see.
See what?
Well, I thought it was always you and I who were in things together.
Oh, now, wait a minute, Jim, it's nothing like that, it's business, politics, not a...
Yeah, sure, well, good luck to you.
Jim, wait! Jealous idiot, I'll have to go talk to him.
Yeah, maybe you better.
All right, Will, I'll meet you at your office later.
Hello, Doc.
Hello, Ava. Well, 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 if it isn't the boy alone on the burning deck whence all but he have fled.
Hi, Doc.
You and that Lawson girl seem to have stirred up quite a ruckus, Will.
Yeah, I'm just beginning to realize it.
Pretty girl, might be a good thing if she was on the council.
Doc, what's this about Ava being Old Man Dean's granddaughter?
It's a fact, Will, on her mother's side. The old man didn't approve of his daughter's husband, ran him out of town before Ava was born. Mother died later, Ava put herself through college, came back here and got that welfare job. She sure is a pretty girl, mighty pretty.
Holy smoke!
What?
I just happened to think, wait till Maggie hears about this.
Will, I'm only saying what you've always said yourself.
Now, Maggie.
A small-town newspaper can't survive unless it stays nonpartisan in local elections.
I know that, Maggie, but...
So what do you do? You not only jump right in with both feet, you jump in on the losing side.
Now, wait a minute, you're calling me out before I even get up to bat. I don't think Ava Lawson's gonna lose, I think she's got a darn good chance.
She's very pretty, isn't she, Will?
Now, Maggie, why do you have to start in on that?
Well, isn't she?
Yeah, but confound it, that's got nothing to do with it. It's a matter of principle, Maggie. Now, if Ava gets in, she'll make sure that youth center's built, that's something we've been trying to get done for a year, you're all for it yourself, you know you are.
But, but, Will, Mr. Dean took a full-page political ad in tomorrow's ed edition. When he hears about this, he'll probably... But, Will, Mr. Dean took a full-page political ad in tomorrow's edition. When he hears about this, he'll probably cancel.
He has heard about it, and he has canceled.
Will...
Now, wait, Maggie, maybe we will lose some money, but we're backing a candidate who stands for something. Remember, it's not the price that counts, it's what a thing's worth.
Okay, Will.
He has heard about it, and he has canceled.
Oh, excuse me.
He has heard about it, and he has canceled.
Will...
Now, wait, Maggie, maybe we will lose some money, but we're backing a candidate who stands for something. Remember, it's not the price that counts, it's what a thing's worth.
Okay, Will, I don't know why I'm arguing. When you're for it, I'm for it.
Good girl, Maggie. Now, look, we're gonna have to break this page and kill Dean's ad, put one of Ava in the place of it.
We oughta use a picture, Will, that'll pull in some votes.
Good idea, then we gotta knock out a new editorial, we gotta work up some speeches this week, we'll get out a special edition the day before election, and Maggie, we're gonna be busier than a pair of bob-tailed fillies in springtime.
I could go on, ladies and gentlemen, tell you of incident after incident I've come across in my work with the welfare board, things most of you haven't known about. Well, I've known about them, and so have some of our town fathers. It's about time something was done, and if you see fit to elect me to the council, something will be done.
Now, don't get worried, folks, I'm just here to introduce the candidate and sort of tell you how I stand on this election. I'll wind up the whole job in five minutes. You know, when it comes to speeches, I've always agreed with the fellow who said that a speech oughta be like a woman's dress, just long enough to cover the subject, but short enough to maintain interest. You know, our opponent has done a lot of talking about horse sense. I guess that's good enough, only I don't just see that it means too much. I've always figured that horse sense was only just about what sense you need to stand up between the shafts of a wagon and let yourself be hitched up and driven.
Daddy, you haven't forgotten about the ice cream cone, have you?
No, Jill, honey, don't you ever think of it.
Well, usually I'd know you wouldn't forget, Daddy, but Mrs. Weatherwax says you've got lots in your mind this week.
Chill, baby, have I been neglecting my very best girl?
That's all right, Daddy, I want Miss Lawson to get elected, too. I think she's pretty, don't you?
Yeah, I, yes, she is. Look, honey, I got a fine idea. Miss Lawson and Miss Button and I are going to work at the office tonight, getting out a special edition. How'd you like to come down with us and stay up late and maybe have some hot chocolate?
Oh, could I, Daddy?
You sure could, honey. Now, let's go in the bank here, I'm gonna cash you...
Hello there, Will. Hiya, Jill, honey.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Doc.
Well, Will, way it stacks up around town, looks like you got yourself a winning candidate in Ava Lawson.
I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Elections day after tomorrow, can't much happen in that length of time, maybe not, but the day you cut the hay is always the day that it rains.
I...
Elections day after tomorrow. Elections day after tomorrow.
Elections day after tomorrow, can't much happen in that length of time, maybe not, but the day you cut the hay is always the day it rains.
I don't see any clouds, Daddy.
You're right, honey, there aren't any clouds. Look, why don't we all go down to the drugstore and get some ice cream?
That is a good idea, Will.
I think I'll have a double strawberry cone with black walnuts on top.
And I think I'll have a double banana split.
Oh, Doc. Now, let's get the rest of your life history, Ava, we're up to college. Where did you go?
State U, major in social science.
State U, four years?
No, five, Will, I, I was out a year.
All right, five years, then what?
Here's a statement for the come page, Will.
Oh, swell, Maggie, give it to Ed and have him set it up.
Okay. There you go, Ed, twelve points, two column boxes.
Is it going to be much longer, Daddy? I'm getting sort of tired.
Just two shakes of a rabbit's tail, honey, we'll be going home before you know it. Now, uh, let's see, Ava, where were we?
Hello, Will.
Jim, is there something wrong?
I saw your car in front, so I figured you were here.
Yes, we've been busy getting the special edition ready, and I...
Too busy to keep our date?
Oh, Jim, I'm sorry, I forgot all about it.
Well, that's a simple enough reason.
Jim, I'm sorry, I...
Don't bother, I'll see you around.
Ava, maybe I didn't do you a favor by talking you into this.
What was he so mad about, Daddy?
Well, don't you worry about it, honey, you just curl up there in the chair, and we'll be through in no time.
Evening, everybody.
Oh, hi, Doc.
Hello, Doc.
I saw Jim leaving just as I came in, I suppose he told you the news.
What are you talking about?
Got a copy of the County Herald here, come in on the eleven o'clock bus, boys are selling them on the streets.
In Illyria? They've never sold an edition here before.
This one's an extra, Maggie, I understand Old Man Dean's backing them.
Well, I guess it doesn't surprise me much.
This will, though, big, front-page article, pictures and all, here.
Let's see what the opposition... These pictures, why they're you, Ava?
Let me see. Will, they're prison pictures, with a number under them.
Illyria Reform Candidate Ex-Convict, this is libel! We'll sue them for every cent they've got!
Will, no, it happens to be true.
True?
I served six months for forgery, my sophomore year in college.
Ava, well, I...
I'm sorry, Will.
Now, wait a minute!
No, Will, let me go, just let me go!
The Sam Hills this all about?
Howdy, folks, County Herald photographer, gotta get some pictures, is there a Miss Ava Lawson here?
No, and get out!
Easy, boy, power of the press, you know!
I've gotta go after her, take over here, will you, Maggie?
Of course, Will.
I'll go with you, Will.
Thanks, Doc, come on.
You are listening to Rogers of the Gazette, starring Mr. Will Rogers Jr. We'll return to tonight's story in just a moment, but first, what would happen if you lost the knob of your radio dial? If you returned to CBS Radio when it happened, you'd still get all the programs America listens to most, the comedy, music, variety, and news broadcasts that have always been first in American listening habits. And now, we continue with the second act of tonight's show.
I can't figure it, Doc, now why the dickens would she want to drive out here to Jetters Lake?
Women will, they don't think like normal people.
Neither do normal people. She must be down there at the boat landing.
Somebody else driving in, Will, headlights back there?
Yeah, Doc, wait here, will you? I better talk to her first alone.
All right, Will.
Ava? Ava?
Leave me alone, Will.
Now, a boat landing at midnight's no place to solve anybody's problems, Ava. Hadn't you, hadn't you better get back from the edge? Water's pretty deep there.
I know it is.
You know, all you'd do would be to both get us kind of wet.
No, I'm not gonna jump, Will.
Will, we better go back for that one. Uh, from line eighteen, no, let's take it from line sixteen, hadn't you better get back from the edge?
Now, a boat landing at midnight, oh...
Yeah, just from, hadn't you better get back from the edge?
Hadn't you better get back from the edge? Water's pretty deep there.
I know it is.
You know, all you'd be is... All, you know all you would be to get both of us kind of wet?
All you'd do.
All you'd do would be?
Just take it from that, from that line again, Will, from line nineteen.
You know, all you'd do would be to get us both kind of wet.
No, I'm not gonna jump, Will. I thought I was, but I couldn't. I'm sorry I got you into all this.
Well, I figure a few mistakes through life are kind of good for a person. They, they kind of make him get up and scratch, same way with a dog. He's better off if he's got a few fleas, gives him something to think about, keeps him from setting around and brooding over being a dog.
Oh, Will.
Come on now, let's get back to the office and see what we can pull out of this wreck.
All right. But I'm afraid there's not much...
Watch out, watch out! Hang on, I'm coming. It's all right, I gotta hold you, relax now, don't kick around.
Hey, folks, look up here.
Huh?
That's it, hold it, thank you!
What was that?
Flashbulb, Ava, we just got our picture taken.
Would you like some more coffee, Ava?
Oh, thanks, I would, Maggie.
Okay.
Well, that's the story of my childhood, Will.
Kind of a rough one.
Yeah.
The other happened in my sophomore year in college. I worked and saved enough money for my first two years at State U, but I was sick during my freshman year and the money ran out. I was desperate, and I forged some checks so I could stay in school, no excuse, I just did it. I was caught, and I served six months in jail.
But you finished college, you went back.
Yes, because one of the professors had the faith and the kindness to take me in hand. She taught me understanding, gave me the courage to go back. Told me that people were kinder than I knew, and they were, Will.
Ava, have you got the nerve to go back again?
Go back again?
I mean, to stand up in front of the people of this town and tell them what you've just told Maggie and me, a whole story, everything?
That's quite a thing to face.
You did it once before.
All right, when?
Tomorrow night, or tonight, holy smoke, it's two in the morning. Now, you go home and get some sleep, Maggie and I still gotta get the paper to bed.
All right, Will.
I'll fix it so we can use the bandstand in the park, we'll probably have a big turnout, they'll all be curious if nothing else, go on now, get out of here.
I'll get these clothes back for you tomorrow, Maggie.
Oh, there's no hurry, good night, Ava, and good luck!
Good luck!
Thanks, night, Will.
Let's go back again, we closed the door at night, Will. Uh, take it from line eight, I'll fix it. From, from line, line eight of Wells, I'll fix it so we can do the bastard.
I'll fix it so we can use the bandstand in the park, we'll probably have a big turnout, they'll be curious if nothing else, go on now, get out of here.
I'll get these clothes back for you tomorrow, Maggie.
Oh, there's no hurry, good night, Ava, and good luck!
Good luck!
Thanks, night, Will.
Well, Maggie, I guess we're in kind of a spot.
I love understatement.
Now, we're gonna kill that front-page story, just carry an announcement about Ava's speech in the park, maybe they'll go along with her and maybe they won't.
Well, common sense oughta tell 'em what's best for this town.
Maybe, but common sense is about the most uncommon thing that I know of. There is one outside chance, though, I'll have a talk with Old Man Dean in the morning.
Dean, what for?
Well, I've gotta do something, and it's just possible he's not as mean a man as he seems, come to think of it, I don't think anybody could be.
Have a seat, Will.
Thanks, may not be here long, Mr. Dean, I guess I'll stand up. Uh, this, uh, painting here, your wife?
Yes.
She looks a lot like your granddaughter Ava, I imagine your daughter did, too.
Did you come here to compare family resemblances, or did you have something on your mind?
Well, it's a little of both, maybe. Mostly, I guess, I came to find out why you let the Herald use that story about your granddaughter.
Well, I not only let them use the story, I gave it to them.
You gave it to them?
Yes, the people of this town had a right to know the truth about a candidate who was asking for their votes. I've always known about Ava's term in jail.
You mean that all the time your daughter was half starving and struggling to bring up Ava, you didn't turn a hand for her?
She made her choice when she married that no-good Lawson. As far as Ava was concerned, since she'd inherited a father's weakness, there was nothing to be done for her.
Oh, I see.
Well, there you are, Will, like them or not, there are your answers.
Mr. Dean, the way I figure it, now, when a man does anything, he usually has three reasons, the one he says out loud, the one he thinks, and the real one, and it's the real one that's important. You kept track of your daughter all through the years, but you didn't go near her, why?
I told you.
Because you loved her, and you quarreled, and that bull-necked pride of yours wouldn't let you back down. On the surface, you told yourself you hated her and hated her child, but deep inside, you knew different.
I think you'd better go, Will.
Inside, you hated yourself, because you knew your pride was only hurting her, and for twenty-five years, it's made you a lonely man. You're a lonely man now, Mr. Dean.
Will, get out of my house!
All right, I'm going, but you know something, Mr. Dean? We may lose the election, but when it comes right down to it, you're the one I feel sorry for.
You are certainly right about one thing, Will, the whole town turned out...
Well, the execution gonna proceed on schedule, Will?
Just waiting for you, Doc, oh, thanks for setting up here on the platform with us.
Well, I figured seeing me up here might remind some of my patients to pay their bills. Evening, Ava. Hiya, Maggie.
Hi, Doc.
All right, Will, let mirth and joy rain unrestrained.
Well, might as well get started. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, you know, to you folks in Illyria, an election is a serious business, otherwise you wouldn't be here tonight. Well, it is to me, too, or I wouldn't be here either. You see, this year, for the first time, I endorsed a candidate for the Town Council, and we started our campaign. Then last night, everything went wrong. The trouble was caused by this article in the County Herald, which is not one of the better newspapers in these parts. It's, uh, badly written, the type's blurred, and it's printed on rather pretty poor stock. In fact, I just don't recommend it at all. Anyway, anyway, as you all know, the article attacked my candidate, a woman I respect and believe in, and I thought you'd want to listen to her side of it, so that's why she's here. Folks, Miss Ava Lawson. All right, Ava, go tell it to them, and good luck!
Thanks, Will. What are the chances, Will?
Maggie, ask me twenty minutes now.
My fellow townspeople and friends, tonight I'm not making a political speech, this is something far different, and far more difficult, but something that has to be done. I'd like to begin by going back a number of years and telling you something about the kind of life I led in the town. I have all of the facts, as I see the facts at least, so I tried not to leave anything out. Well, there's the story, thank you for listening to it. I'm through now, I have nothing more to say. Tomorrow is Election Day, or as you might call it, Judgment Day.
Maggie, they're four, listen to that, they're on her side!
Sure I am.
Looks like she pulled it out of the fire, Will.
Oh, I shouldn't go through with that again if my life depended on it.
It's all over now, Ava, the apple cart's right-side up again, if they'll only remember tomorrow how they felt tonight.
Ava?
Jim!
Ava, I sat out there listening, pulling for you all the way, kicking myself for acting like I had.
Jim.
And then I saw this paper, here, take a look at it.
What's the matter with Jim, anyway?
Will, look!
Huh?
That picture last night at the lake, it's you and me, Will, in the water with just our heads showing. But read the caption, Will!
Editor and candidate in midnight swimming party at Jetters Lake.
Read all about it!
And they're selling it all over the park!
People are sure read a lot into that, that's not fair.
Well, there goes the election, right out the window.
Okay, Tommy, thanks very much.
More returns, Maggie?
Eighth precinct, hundred and ten to ninety-six, needless to say, we're on the short end. I'm sorry, Will.
It was that photograph in the Herald, cost us a thousand votes, just enough to lose. Well, we placed second, anyway.
It's all my fault, that's the thing that...
Come in!
Good evening.
What can we do for you, Mr. Dean?
I accept my apologies for one thing, that picture the Herald printed, I, I didn't know about it ahead of time, and the Herald by the way won't be sending any more editions into Illyria.
Well, now, I...
Miss Lawson, Ava, my congratulations.
Well, it's the other way around, isn't it? I'm the one who lost.
I resigned from the council about an hour ago, and I got them to appoint you to fill out my term. Since I was just re-elected, that means a full four years.
I don't understand.
Well, maybe Will can explain it to you. Explained a few things to me yesterday. You're right, Will, I am a lonely man, one who needs his granddaughter. You'd like a chance to prove to her that he can change, once she's made up his bull-headed mind, too. Well, good night, granddaughter, everyone.
I wouldn't believe that, if I hadn't heard it.
Will, it looks as though I owe quite a lot to you.
Nothing a youth center won't pay for.
There'll be one, I just can't believe it about, about grandfather.
Well, if you can... Well, if you can, Ava, forgive and forget, he does need you, and it wasn't easy for him to come here tonight. Well, it's not much of a trick to see ourselves as others see us. The hard part is believing it and admitting it, and that's what he did.
Is anybody here speaking to fools tonight?
I am, Jim.
Are you in the mood to listen to abject apologies?
Yes, among other things.
My car's outside.
And what are we waiting for?
Will, I'm sorry. I guess I was a real idiot.
You sure as a dickens were. Go on, get out of here, the both of you. See you tomorrow. Good night.
Good night.
Maggie, I don't know quite how it happened, but we came out all right after all.
Well, by all logic, we shouldn't have.
Logic's all right, Maggie, as long as it's on your side, but you don't really need it. You know, it's kinda like that famous paradox of Zeno.
The ancient Greeks, Will, at this time of night...
Now, it seems that a fellow named Hercules was gonna run a race with a turtle. Well, naturally, they gave the turtle a head start. So Zeno pointed out that before Hercules could catch the turtle, first he'd have to cover half the distance between them, then half the remaining distance, then half of that, and so on. Logically, then, he'd always have half the remaining distance to go, and no matter how fast he'd run, he'd never quite catch up to that turtle.
So, what happened?
Well, Hercules didn't know about logic, but he was a darn good runner, he won the race.
You have just heard Rogers of the Gazette, starring Mr. Will Rogers Jr., with Georgia Ellis as Maggie Button.